I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Ms. Schollwasser.
Brandt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us for a moment in silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll first entertain the motion on the agenda received as proposed or amended.
I was going to ask if we could amend the agenda to include item M being any reports or information from the board. So you could have some discussion.
Very good. All right, we have a second on the agenda as amended.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. The next we will move on to the organizational meeting. Um, item A is a resolution to elect Chair of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the 2025 year.
I would make a motion to elect Tavis Hall as the Chair if he is willing.
Certainly.
Can I second that?
Yes, you could.
I would second that. All right, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion and questions? Um, I'll just say it's been an honor to be your Chair again this last year and I appreciate the support of my colleagues. And I wish Tavis great luck this next year, so.
Thank you.
Um, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call please, Ms. Schollwasser.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved.
A lot drinking your coffee. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Vote in confidence. Uh, we run this, so, uh, item two B, resolution to elect Chair Pro Tem of Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the year 2025.
I'll make a, a motion to elect Supervisor Leyland as Chair Pro Tem. I would second that.
So will I.
All right. We have a motion and a second, uh, for Lynn Leyland to serve as Chair Pro Tem for the Board of Supervisors. This is a resolution, um, Ms. Schollwasser.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. All right, next is, we've got a motion, uh, that the standing committees, uh, for the 2025 year be established.
I'll make that motion if we, so we can have some discussion on that too as far as timeline and what we're thinking about.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second, we have any discussion?
Well, I think that's open for, like you said, we know we have a, a new individual on as board and welcome and thank you for serving.
Thank you.
And, um, but as far as looking at those, I didn't know if we wanted to wait until we have the other, the election, I guess, January twenty eighth and have the other person on board and we all participate in some discussion on that. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with waiting on C and D, um, give us all some time to, um, map out the schedules of those meetings for this year and make sure that they work for, for folks that, that are interested and get assigned to them.
I think we'd also have some discussion or there'd been some work already being done, maybe looking at some of the internal committees and having those committees look at if they wanted some changeups to present to us as well, so that would be good.
You know, I'll just say that one caveat that if they're, that January election does go into a runoff, uh, we might want to take action sooner on some of them, just in case there's some that were, um, going to miss meetings for, especially some of the quarterly ones. But we can figure that out with the schedule.
It won't be a runoff.
Okay, yeah, how many people?
It'll be whoever, yep.
Just, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Operating in halls pretenses.
I think because you're thinking cities.
Okay, very good.
But this will not be one.
So at least it'd be like first February.
First February, yeah.
The campus will be the following Tuesday and then it'll be official and then the new board member needs to take office within ten days of the campus.
Awesome.
Perfect.
So much possible.
Uh huh, yeah.
For Justin's information, we could have, um, we have someone assigned to each one, but there's also an alternate. So if there's someone that you don't get assigned to, but you're really interested in, you can always be the alternate and, uh, participate that way.
All right, this is a motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, next is a motion that the appointments to the respective boards and committees as representatives, as representative of the Board of Supervisors be approved for the 2025 year.
I'll move to table that until the first meeting we have in February.
Thank you, I'll create a second.
All right, once there's any further discussion, we've got a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Motion to authorize the County Auditor's Office to issue cigarette permits on behalf of Blackhawk County for the 2025 calendar year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Resolution that the County Auditor be authorized to issue payments during the 2025, uh, during 2025 for the following water, lights, insurance, telephones, salaries, payrolls is fixed by the Board of Supervisors, postage, court reporters, jury, and witness fees, employee criminal history, record checks, bank and bond payments and fees, and emergency expense from the Community Services, Veteran Affairs, and Sheriff's Departments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, this is a resolution, Ms. Schollwasser.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Got a resolution, uh, G, resolution to authorize County Auditor Karen Schollwasser to conduct claims and payments, uh, sorry, claims and payroll transactions on behalf of Blackhawk County Auditor's Office effective January one, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, this is a resolution, this is Schollwasser.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. A resolution that the following newspapers, uh, be designated as the two official newspapers of Blackhawk County for the 2025 year. Courier and Hudson Herald.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, roll call.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. A motion, uh, I, a motion to direct Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, to close county roads as necessary during the 2025 construction season, subject to prior notification to the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. J, a motion to direct Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, to embargo county roads as necessary for the 2025 year, subject to prior notification to the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, so motion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion also carries. Item K, uh, motion to direct Catherine Nicholas, County Engineers, assign the progress voucher for farm-to-market payments for the 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Item L, resolution to adopt the 2025 Construction Evaluation Resolution for the purpose of submitting, uh, recommendations to the DNR for approval or disapproval of construction permit applications pursuant to Iowa Code four, five, nine, point zero, uh, sorry, point three, zero, four, um, regarding proposed, um, confinement feed operation structures.
So moved, second.
We've got a motion and a second, uh, this is a resolution.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item M, uh, other discussion.
Well, the simple one, I guess, is Chad Garnett's next work session with, um, everyone, the board, as well as department heads and second in command, is next Tuesday. Justin, you may be well aware of that, but I was gonna say it's from one to four thirty at Hartman Reserve. Chris, I know, um, he's looking forward to all of us participating in most of the meetings and just so everyone's aware, because we wanted to be certain people knew as far as having an open meeting and that type of thing and that it wasn't, um, a problem. Um, he is well aware and has informed all of us, I think, um, that have attended that when, um, we get to the point where we're making dis- decisions for the county or on direction or what things initiatives we want to follow, that will need to be a public meeting and he will be participating in that with all of us. But right now it's just kind of about the team building and our thoughts and goals and different, as individuals, when we're there and hearing, kind, doing some of the exercises and participating in the group things, so that was all right. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear of that, that we weren't doing something that we shouldn't and he is well aware.
So next Tuesday, we can all, we don't need it to be published?
No.
Okay.
No. Still the same time, one to four thirty. And for the most part, he talked about in January and probably continuing on to February, that would be his idea of kind of continuing some form of a meeting on Tuesdays, one to four thirty. Um, it may sometimes be just the board, it may sometimes be a group mix, it may just be department heads, but to kind of designate that day as something on our calendar that we may very likely need to participate.
I know, I saw the email from him that sort of outlined what looked like every Tuesday supervisors. Was there some, when, when you talked to him, was there some expectation, some of those might drop off?
I don't, but there might be. I think, I think he's basing it on where we are, kind of at the time, like when we have that meeting and seeing what progress we've made and what needs to be next steps, being able to say, hey, this is what I'd like to do for the next one and not just go, oh, sorry, it's not on our calendar. That's, that was just, um, this, yeah, um, the other, um, item I mentioned I was talking about was budget. Because we understand, obviously, that puts a very, um, different, I guess, schedule for us doing those every Tuesday afternoons and we know how important it's been to do our budget sessions, which have typically been Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. And, and so it was just an awareness and a discussion I thought we might need to have on what we'd like to do for a budget and, and to make sure everyone's ready and we can make progress in both, I guess. Thoughts?
I mean, I guess my preference, I, I don't want to shortchange either of those processes. Um, and we only get a crack every so often, strategic planning. And so if, if we can maybe keep those Tuesday sessions a little lighter so that we don't have complete fatigue by four o'clock on Tuesday afternoons, um, uh, that means we have to shift a little bit, maybe a department or two more on those Thursdays. Um, then so be it, uh, I think.
That works for me, you know, I, since we've already designated, excuse me, Thursdays, um, and that's kind of been a carryover. I think if that works for everyone too, I think staff would probably appreciate it as well because Tuesdays, they like some time to get something done in between the budget session and Garnett's session and need a little bit of time in there, if that works, I don't know, you were both here to have a thought or opinion on it as well? On what?
I, I would agree with that. If we could be done by eleven or eleven thirty on Tuesday mornings, that would be very beneficial. Then we could get a few things done, uh, making it up to heart, so that when I'm like.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah.
Just a warning. Then he gave us some strong words last session for some he felt were not timely, right?
Yeah.
Like me and Karen. I felt about that talk.
Yeah, everybody did, they shouldn't have, that's what I think, he didn't mean it, but I said it was a large group, but I think so he wanted to make sure he had everybody. Michelle, do you have any thoughts or comments about budget to let work and think that we can make whatever works?
Yeah, I'll just add maybe for Tuesday, the, or Thursday, the twenty third of January, that's gonna be one day that's out for me and I don't really want to miss budget sessions, but other than that, that schedule works for me.
To just, okay, well, we can kind of play it by eight or two hours from session to session. It starts to look like conflicts for anybody or everybody or department heads and stuff too. Do you want something, do you have something prepared even, Michelle, for I guess the next, since we're starting already in January for the, for next Tuesday or?
Um, I, I have some things ready that we could do, yeah.
I'm in.
It's, it's hard, knowing we talked about wanting to start by eleven, eleven thirty, that's difficult because we don't know what departments turn in until Thursdays at noon, so.
Do, do you have others things that could be done on that, like, you know, I know, like, we always have like the medical examiner and the colon and the, you know, coming, trying to think of some of the others, but there are two or three that are usually fairly easy, so those maybe start off, but are those, is that information ready?
Yep, it's not quite ready, but it can be by Tuesday and I, we could also, I don't know, we could talk about property valuations if you would like to, because that information is.
Is it in at least now?
Oh, good. So we could do that and we could start departments. How long are you thinking you want the meetings to be on Thursdays?
Want a break by lunch?
It's hard.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily a link check for Thursdays.
Well, that's why we're gonna be talking one hour or three hours, because if we cut down the Tuesdays, I don't know if you want more time on Thursdays or not, that's, you just need to.
Well, I don't remember what we went to on Thursdays, some, we had some Thursdays that weren't so long, it seemed like at last year's session.
We did.
Say we can just maybe.
I'd love to keep them in an hour to two hours on Thursdays if possible, recognizing that it's probably only two hours before turning back on Tuesdays.
Yeah, like it'd be done by eleven if we could, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, I think part, part of it is, you know, uh, making sure that we really focus on the changes in each department. Not as much maybe line by line, but focus specifically on what the adjustments are from the previous year. Of course, if there's some top level stuff, have some discussion, but, um, maybe abbreviating those, making those a little more efficient, I think would be beneficial for everybody. I remember my first year, it is a lot to take in, uh, as you're trying to figure out where the math results are, uh, right?
I have that part now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah.
Might be, yeah, it, it, there's a lot, so like I said, yeah, we may have to revisit some of that too, just because we are gonna be a whole new board.
What's, what's the, uh, deadline to get budgets approved and?
Well, this is, the state has turned this into a really complex process, so we have to have two hearings now. The first one, I need your decisions probably by the end of February. So we have, we need to publish that first one and have it, have the data uploaded to the state's side by March fifth. Then, and then we have to wait a while, several weeks for the Auditor's Office has to go through a process where they may allow letters to all the property owners and we can't proceed with our second hearing until after all that is done. So the second hearing likely can't be until, I'm gonna guess, mid-April. Um, so we will be at this, we will not be able to finalize it till the middle of April. But hopefully, what we would like to do is have that first hearing kind of be the final numbers, if we're fortunate enough to make that happen, but that means having that all wrapped up by the end of February, which is really, that's not very far off actually, for a process that's gonna extend into April.
That'd be a good goal though, try to have it done by February.
I agree, I would.
They have to be changed, but.
Yep, yeah, and if we do, because the only thing to remember is, once we have that hearing, once you've set the things for the March hearing, we can't increase things after that. We can always reduce, but we, we can't increase and that includes the tax levy, but it also includes expenses by program. So that's another reason we'd like you to pretty much have your choices made by the end of February.
Maybe we can put together a schedule of the departments, as well as when they'd be presenting on dates that work for them and everybody so that if something needs to move or change, but we know they're kind of at the front end, so that we can have that information.
I know that, I know it gets.
I don't know that that will work, there's departments that are still working.
Well, I don't mean that we put up a schedule for them and tell them to make it, I just mean that they see the schedule of the dates or the times that we want to kind of work within and see what works and get.
Because, yeah, we, I pretty much gave that until November, but we can do that again.
I mean, I will admit, I would actually like to see us say that we want the presentations on certain days. Um, it allows us to be prepared with questions, it allows us to have conversations with department heads. Um, I think we can do that intelligently, I think we can do it thoughtfully, recognizing that certain departments might have a little bit more flexibility and might have an easier time, uh, getting us that information earlier rather than later. Um, but I, I think one of, admittedly, one of my frustrations over the last couple of sessions has been not always, you know, when's this one gonna come, when's that one gonna come? I'm, I'm sort of waiting till a couple of days, it feels like, before, um, if we could have a couple of weeks before to know who's gonna be coming next so that we can have the conversations offline with department heads with any questions. Um, not with any questions, but with, with questions. Um, and then have, of course, have the presentations later, but I, I'd like to see a little bit more intentionality in that schedule, even if that is a little bit of a push.
Yeah, two weeks, I was thinking might be a push, but at least a week for sure and have that so we could get back with people on that. And then having it on our agendas was always helpful to know who was, who was on for that day. Why is this helpful if that would be something we could add again?
I would just say, is, is, is that, that's feasible, do you guys think, as department heads?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Or how much difficulty does a two-week lead time cause?
I think, I'd be comfortable with a week, I, I just sort of threw off.
So like next week, we're, we bargain with the sergeants on the ninth, so like, I'm like, ooh, I don't want to do the ninth, but I could go early, like I have a small budget, HR generally, you know, we kind of talked about a few of those. And I think we've kind of crafted it somewhat like that, we've got some of the smaller ones out of the way, kind of more known ones, but then some of your larger ones, but then also last year, some got to be kind of lengthy because we waited, you know, so. But I, I think a week's notice would be great, um, you know, we did all of our presentations at the end of the year, so just kind of giving us a, you know, what do you ultimately just want to see if it's just a change or, um, but yeah, I, I think for most departments, a week would be fine. Um, some have a little bit more, I think Sheriff's Office with the Sergeant Union, we want to kind of see where that lands. Um, the, those negotiations, which we should know hopefully more by the end of next week, if not early following, but, um, I think probably tells hopefully a few of those. I know they have to get into their boards already, so maybe they're closer, but I think a week makes sense.
I don't have a lot to add, but a, a week makes sense, so.
That's all we have to add, that's all we needed to hear.
A week, a week works for us. I, I request that we go towards the end, we have a lot to talk about with you and it might be that you want to know more about, well, how things are going before we present to you, I mean, in the Road Department.
Yeah, those of you, there's some of you that have those really large budgets and, you know.
See Rory popped up.
Yeah.
Hello.
You're next.
Yeah, I, uh, I'm kind of ditto with Kathy, um, we'd like to be towards the end. We do have a couple of, uh, projects that we're trying to get numbers on, uh, particularly solar is one that I'd really like to, uh, get in front of the board this budget period, so, uh, if we could be towards the end of the process, that would be appreciated. But a week's notice is, 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 is good for me, as long as we're towards the end.
So, okay, that's great for departments. Um, I asked for everybody to have all their stuff to me before now. You know, I don't totally have it. We are now taking up Tuesday afternoons and strategic planning and I don't have a clue what homework might come out of that. But I think it's only reasonable to expect Joe and I to get at least a week in there to prepare the schedules, but we do a lot of that preparation. So it's, you know, as I go through it, I get questions, I reach out to departments, it takes a while to get answers to that and I have to change numbers. It's, it's, it's a process. Um, I have no problem with giving you a week's notice, I think that might mean that we may not have things. I, I don't know, maybe everything is gonna fall into place perfectly and we can do everything, but you, there needs to be some reasonable amount of time for us to prepare things to provide to you, so.
So are you still short some submitting?
We're still working through things, yes.
Working through things? Certain budgets or everyone's budget or?
There are some that are ready, there are some that are not, and, you know, it just takes time to get through them all.
Can you, uh, perhaps afterwards, just give, direct us, like, where, which departments or whoever is kind of like?
I would rather not.
Okay, okay.
It, it's a process for our departments too, we have some departments that are, you know, going through some huge staffing changes right now and just for personnel is a, a challenge.
Would it help to have a, the board though, like something from the boards indicating that we want those and the process changing a little bit from time to time?
Yes, and if you want to send an email to everyone, that would be fine. Because I, I can't, you know, I can't do them all in five minutes anyway.
Right, sure.
A minute the same day, but we are, you know, trust me, we're working very hard to get them done.
Do we have any done? I mean, we, I mean, some that, that you've looked at and reviewed and are comfortable with, that's, that's what.
We have our department head meetings up next week, I think, so second, three.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be a place too, if the board member wants to come to the department head meeting and, you know, we can relay some of that there too. Um, but, uh, yeah, so not to call anyone out or anything, but, you know, um, at the same time, like, yeah, obviously we want to get them submitted and get them in and, um, keep moving on it, I guess.
And they were requested by the end of the year, so.
I think we submitted them earlier. I know, I was late, mine was late, but, yeah, but, yeah, but I think you had instructions by like December.
December eleventh.
Yeah, December eleventh, so.
It was when I'd hoped for them and that's.
It, it was a soft deadline intentionally because I couldn't, you know, we're still wrapping up the audit then, so you, I can't just immediately do all of twenty budgets on December twelfth. But, yeah, we've been, we put a lot of, we had the opportunity or took the opportunity, I'm gonna say, to spend a lot more time on the personnel this year than we were able to last year. If you remember last year, we were still negotiating with departments all through January, so it was difficult. We, we did our best with estimates, but now that we have those, we're, I'm trying to do what I traditionally do, which is get personnel costs nailed down, because that is our largest expense, so if, when I feel good about that, I feel better about the budget.
And I know there's been a lot of work on ARPA and different projects too, so a lot of things came into a hearing, but it's just like, it's kind of shift focused to budget and everybody needs to help us.
And they, and the departments do a wonderful job, I just don't, we just need some time to wrap things up.
I just want to go on the record and say I'm not trying to infer that people are slacking. I just, I don't, I, I assume everybody's running with unique sets of challenges.
Exactly, that's a very good way to put it.
So I wasn't like, let's figure out who the culprits are.
Yeah, that's why I don't, yeah, we'll get, we'll get things to you, I'm just gonna say if you want to have, if you need things a week ahead of time, I could delay things a week or two, but that's fine, we can do that, I just want you to be aware of that. Because historically, people have wanted to start getting stuff, so if you're comfortable not getting it, you know, quite as early, we can do, you can have it farther ahead of time, does that make sense? That's.
True.
We just need to start making progress too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it certainly becomes a ripple, right? Um, as there's delays on the one side, it continues to, so that we've, uh, we've got a state mandated calendar here as well, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, is what's the date that the state requires that the budget has to be adopted by?
Well.
That, that's the thing, it's that three-step process.
Okay.
By March, I'm gonna say March fifth is the first requirement, but I have to have numbers for all departments uploaded on March fifth. So I need time for March fifth to actually put them in the state forms, which is why I'm saying the end of February for the first round of numbers.
Makes sense.
Then we have the second hearing that has to occur sometime in April and the final certification date is April three.
Okay.
So are we just for calendar sake, February twenty seventh, that's that last Thursday of February, does that feel like the date where we, we want to set as a goal? If not before, we're going to take action, that, that's our, that's our goal date?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we can always come, as the process outlines, we can come back afterwards and, and light it up and stuff.
Correct. Yeah, so is it, maybe it's a good time, well, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't be expanding, but if there are specific things, um, initiatives that individual board members want that are, you know, that aren't necessarily the responsibility of a specific department, the sooner the better to get those incorporated.
Let's go. Just the other thing I want to bring up, just looking forward to the year, is I'd like to see us get in the practice of doing one, uh, annual meeting with each of the autonomous boards, the Conservation, the VA, and, um, the Board of Health. I think it'd just be good practice to be in.
Any particular time?
Um, I'd say, you know, let's get through the, the, the bulk of strategic planning, but, um, you know, so I'm looking towards, you know, late spring or summertime. Um, I'd say, you know, let's get through the, the, the bulk of strategic planning, but, you know, so I'm looking towards, you know, late spring or summertime.
I mean, to do it early kind of set off the year maybe or whatever.
Yeah, earlier could be good.
That'd be good, okay.
Yeah. We've done a number over the years with the board of health, but I think it'd be good to just do it with all the different, some autonomous boards.
Yeah, I think that's good, because I said, we have the liaisons and stuff that serve on there and it's always good to have someone that serves in that position, but then the others kind of aren't in touch.
Minor one, last, on Tuesday, it was mentioned about the, the local preference policy, maybe coming before policy review. It'll probably be a week or so, like, and I haven't had a chance to read, we've got an adjustment, I think we can get that inserted in the language, if that's an accurate description, so, just didn't want folks to think that was coming in the next round, it'll probably, a little bit, but, I think we thought that.
So your plan is to, you're preparing something, you and Mike are preparing something and then to present to the policy review?
We'll send it to policy review, just for them to look over and make sure.
I think we had planned on meeting next week, but after this conversation, like, we're gonna meet after the board meeting on January seventh, but I don't know, Chris, maybe we should, I think we could talk about it, we should do it that soon or could we do like Monday afternoon?
I, I'm still okay, meeting after the meetings.
We're not planning to have a bunch of budget sessions next Tuesday. Well, we'll, I guess, okay, we'll just keep it as is.
I thought I would have smaller.
Smaller, okay.
But, but obviously, they aren't gonna get them a week ahead of time, so.
But if we, if we are done at eleven, that's still fine to make this policy review afterwards and I just gotta get to Hartman by one.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, so does Chris though.
Yeah, sure, okay, well, we can see how Tuesday goes, but yeah, that was.
Maybe Kathy, how do you feel about that now that you're one of our new members?
So, about the local preference?
No, about the policy review meeting next Tuesday.
That's fine.
Okay.
We guess we'll keep that one, okay, so we'll, but I'll probably try to avoid Tuesdays for the next, you know, for that, when it's, it's not called local preference or any policies for that matter, but, um, we'll keep it as is, so, thanks.
And you mentioned, I'm just a question, and this is like, I think the two of you agreed to interview the health board appointee, that, that we, I might have missed that.
We'll sort that out this week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they've got a little bit later meeting this month, so we got a little more time to.
I just happened to think I didn't remember as.
No, well, we'll make sure we've got someone for the full board to approve before, in time for their first meeting of the year.
That was my question.
That's what Christmas promised to people.
I was gonna say, I thought I was going, maybe, thanks, that's all, I guess, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Not, any kind of motion to adjourn? Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. We're done?